Alrighty, there we go. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our June work session. We hope everyone's summer has been off to a great start. It's hard to believe it's halfway finished already, but glad to see everyone here. Before we get started with our work session, we do need to request a motion to amend the agenda, to add two items under Old Business for us to vote on tonight. One being the approval of the fiscal year 2025 general fund budget and the other being the approval of the fiscal year 2025 other funds budget. So can I get a motion to amend the agenda?
We'll move.
Mr. Bailey?
Ms. Stevens, on paper.
Alrighty, motion passes. Thank you, guys. Okay, so at our next board meeting in two weeks, we're going to skip next week, but in two weeks, Ms. Maddox, you will have the invocation and lead us in the pledge. We'll approve some minutes, the agenda, we'll have some recognitions, possibly some requests will appear before the board. At this time, we're going to jump into the superintendent's department reports, and we will start off with support services report with Dr. Bowen. Alrighty, we'll move on to business services report with Ms. Houston.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have your invoices between $10,000 and $74,999 for the month of June. The first one is to Daniel Murphy, general fund, $13,486. I don't have my readers, and I didn't have time to go get them, I'm so sorry. So this might not come out too well tonight. Professional legal services. The next one is Sundance Newbridge Consolidated Funds, $15,635. Decoder kits, oh my gosh. This is going to be a long night.
You can't say and I can't hear.
I'm just all messed up tonight. It takes a team. Thank you. All right. Let's start over then. Dan Murphy, general fund, $13,486. Professional legal services, and that's district-wide. Sundance Newbridge Consolidated Funds, $15,635. Decoder kits for K through second grade, and that's Bethlehem Elementary School. Wilson Language Training, L4GA is how it was funded, $22,896. For Wilson Language Foundation's durables, K through second grade for Auburn Elementary School. Southern Computer Warehouse, general fund, $10,579. And that's Passler Monitoring Tool, and that's district-wide. Allen &amp; Allen Consulting, out of the general fund, $10,946. And that was our E-Rate Consulting, and that's district-wide. Nedvio LLC, out of the general fund, $25,968. And that's three laser projectors for the boardroom, so that benefits the district. Sundance Newbridge, out of consolidated funds, $17,316 for decodables for Kennedy Elementary School. Apple Capital Projects, $15,406 for 27 Mac Mini's, and that's for the BASSA II Music Tech Lab. Noscapes LLC, paid out of the general fund, $10,200 for the Russell House tree removal, and that's for the new Russell House that we're going to have district employees at. Just Write Readers, L4GA, $13,193. And that's through K through second grade decodables, and III through 5th grade high-interest decodables for Auburn Elementary School. Custom Computer, paid out of the general fund, $20,765 for Tableau subscription, and that's district-wide. Northeast Georgia RISA, paid out of SPED and general funds, and that's $44,000 for our shared SPED services, and that's district-wide. Global Knowledge, paid out of the general fund, $21,084 for Polaris Discovery subscription, and that's for the district-wide. Wasabi Technologies, out of the general fund, $11,891 is off-site backup storage for servers, and that's district-wide. Ninety-five Percent Group, paid out of Esser Funds, $12,495 for vocabulary search, and that's for our elementary school. Dell, paid out of the general fund, $12,672 for a new server, and that's district-wide. Collaborative Classrooms, paid out of Esser Funds, $12,703 for SIPs learning subscription, and that's for our middle schools. Just Write Readers, paid out of consolidated funds, $18,425 for first-grade class pack decodables for Holson Beck Elementary School. Qualtrics, paid out of the general fund, $25,725 for our Qualtrics renewal. That's our surveying subscription that we have to survey our district and our community, so that's district-wide. Stevens Gymnasium, paid out of the general fund, $12,400 for gym floor refinishing, and that's for various schools. Southern Computer Warehouse, paid out of Capital Projects, $10,902 for 69 docs for laptops, and that's district-wide. Coulter Ventures, paid out of Capital Projects funds for $18,702 for the BASSA II weight room, and obviously that's for BASSA. CDW Government, paid out of Capital Projects, $63,991 for 72 Surface laptops, and that's for the district. Employees, Athens Janitorial Supplies, paid out of Capital Projects funds, $39,845, and that's for our BASSA II custodial equipment that we're going to need to start up that school. College Board, Appalachia High School, paid out of Appalachia High School school funds, which is reimbursed by the students, $15,842 for advanced placement exams. And the College Board for BASSA, paid out of BASSA school funds, reimbursed by the students, $19,578 for advanced placement exams and SAAT testing. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Alrighty, next we've got system operations report with Mr. Purno.
I want to share an update with you here on our projects, and I'll follow your lead, Michelle. Okay. So our C-FIT Park, Winder Legacy Park, opened June 14th and 15th, and had a great ribbon cutting and grand opening to the facility, and so many people came out. The foundation did a tremendous job putting on those events, and if you drive by there pretty much any time of day, you're going to have a hard time finding a parking spot. There's a lot of kids and families out there enjoying the park, and it's great to see. So very excited about how all that came together and progressed. So our Performing Arts Center, moving along very well. I believe we could say we're in the dry. We probably have a little bit left to do on the roof, but we're nearly there with that piece, and that's just a very big, big part of having a successful project is getting dried in and get those interior finishes underway. The brick has started as well, so very good things out there at the Performing Arts Center, moving along well. This is probably my favorite thing to talk about right here, summer cleaning. Kind of boring maybe to some, but this is protection put down on the floor. I believe that's actually County Line Elementary. I just showed that to say that that's a big part of the construction project. We take everything out of those buildings. We move up and down the halls with the equipment and dollys and forklifts, all this kind of stuff, so it's important to protect the floors, and our contractors do a great job with that. Here's furniture in the hallways. So every classroom we have, unless there's carpet, and there's very few of those, we take every piece of furniture out of the room. And so there's a tremendous amount of stuff. That picture doesn't do it justice. Some of the hallways, you've got to turn sideways to get down them. There's so much stuff out there. But here's a room that's empty, and so we top scrub. There's someone top scrubbing the floors to get those top couple of layers off, and then we put the floor finish back down. I cheated a little bit there. That looks like it's wet because it is. That hadn't dried yet. That's dry. But obviously, you know, we're looking for a good shine on that, let it dry and set up, and then we get to move all furniture. I say we, our custodians get to move all furniture back in. So just a kudos to our folks out in the schools doing tremendous work here. County Line in Bethlehem. Our renovations are well underway there. Really, the day after teachers left, we move in and start taking everything out. So this is the gym and new duct sock up in the air. Mechanical room, very exciting. We'll be working on our playgrounds as well as part of the project. There again is floor protection. Units are already back up in the ceilings. The old units are pulled out. We'll begin the wood floors in the gyms here soon. So I haven't seen the picture yet where it looks like, you know, a bomb went off in there, but that's what it looks like when teachers leave, and then we start putting it all back together. So again, the projects are going well, and we're excited about all the summer work and cleaning taking place.
Looks like you guys have been busy. We appreciate it. Thank you. Alrighty, next we've got teaching and learning with Dr. Moten.
I am going to ask Dr. James and Mrs. Fallows to join me at the podium so we can share an update on the new Georgia ELA standards. That has been part of the professional learning for the summer. And on the next slide, there's an overview so that you can see what the information that we'll be sharing with you this evening. There are six bullet points there. We'll talk about the structure and alignment, the hierarchy and domains, the standards overview, the available resources for teachers, the timeline for implementation of the standards, and then on the last slide, we'll talk about some teaching and learning priorities for the district. And on the next slide, you can see there, this is pretty much a timeline that shares what has happened from the inception of the new standards with the Department of Education. The new standards were approved in May of 2023, and then in 2023, '24, and '24, '25, teachers have been receiving professional learning and training, and new resources have become available, and assessment alignment, and then communication to parents. And then in the 2025-2026 school year is when the standards will actually be implemented. So Dr. James is going to give you the information on the framework and hierarchy of the standards.
Good evening. The new framework is organized as a classification system that enables users to systematically drill into different levels and depths of information. Categories at the top of the hierarchy are broad while those at the bottom are more specific. When we're looking at the top, our domains includes the next level of the ELA framework is the big ideas. The big ideas serve to unify sets of related standards, and most of our big ideas spiral through grades K-12. When you're looking at our standards, each big idea encompasses a set of interconnected standards that describe key competencies for each of the four grade bands as K-2, 3-5, 6-8, and 9-12. The standards are written at the grade level band to maximize connections and enhance vertical alignment. Importantly, academic standards in Georgia are designed for all learners, and this includes our students with disabilities, our English language learners, and our gifted students. And lastly, at the bottom, our expectations. Each grade band standard is further broken into specific grade-level expectations for positive student outcomes. These expectations communicate the essential knowledge, the skills, and enduring concepts that all students should know, should understand, and practice by the end of each specific grade level. They also serve to differentiate teaching and learning expectations from one grade level to the next. Alrighty. The top level of the new ELA framework is divided into domains. The domains cover broad areas of ELA skills and concepts and provide four different entry points into the K-5 standards and three different entry points into the 612 standards, as you see on the figure. For our standards, this is actually an example that our educators across the state of Georgia would see in regards to our standards. It includes the domain, which will be foundations. It includes the actual big idea. It includes the standard itself and as well as the key ideas that are included. Some of the key takeaways that have been communicated from the Department of Education is that handwriting is included with the new standards. PL is also, our professional learning is also embedded with each standard, so for each standard, you'll see a star, and that gives the specific professional learning for our teachers that have been going through our Georgia Literacy Academy over the last year. And the new curriculum will fully address learning deficits because it also includes a learning progression so that our educators can know what each grade level is expected to teach for each standard.
All right. This slide shows us some of the resources that are already available for teachers aligned to the new standards. You can see that Georgia Connects is the hub that provides Georgia educators with quick access to resources, the standards, data dashboards, professional learning, and Georgia DOE applications. You'll see on the left side, the suitcase is the Georgia Standards Platform. It was created to ensure all stakeholders have open, equitable, and easy access of the learning frameworks for kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. There is a QR code there that you are able to snap with your phone, and you can go in and see all of those standards right now at your leisure. On the right side, Inspire provides the content in a visually organized layout to make it easy to navigate. Inspire includes the Georgia DOE resources that pertain to each grade and subject area. These resources include curriculum maps, sample lessons and activities, assessment information for each subject. And with its user-friendly design, educators can seamlessly search for a specific topic. They can peruse curated content, and they can even organize resources to use in their This next slide shows the implementation timeline. You can see, just as Dr. Moten was saying, that this all started in May of 2023, and throughout the '24-'25 school year, our teachers and leaders are going to engage in ongoing job-embedded professional learning about the new standards to prepare for that full implementation in '25-'26. Updated assessments are going to be administered during that '25-'26 school year. At the high school level, one major change due to the new standards is that EOC testing is also now going to be aligned to 10th-grade literature instead of American literature, which has been the case. All right. And then this slide just summarizes all of the professional learning that our district and school leaders have engaged in, as well as teachers as we go through this next school year. You can see that professional learning is going to be supported by our district leaders, Georgia DOE and RISA leaders, school-based leaders and coaches, all elementary teachers in K-5, and many other leaders in the district are working on completion of the Georgia Connects literacy modules. You saw some of those highlighted in that foundation slide earlier. Those modules are going to help us ensure that all teachers have the knowledge needed to support structured literacy in our schools. During pre-planning, our elementary teachers are also going to engage in professional learning to prepare for implementing our new ELA curriculum H of H reading.
And as I mentioned, and as you can see on the screen, there are a number of priorities and work that our teachers have to engage in, and what we've tried to do is narrow that so that they have a scope and some priorities and not try to focus on every single thing that's coming down for our teachers. So we've really tried to narrow that down to what's most important so that we can support teachers during the school year. And you can see the K-12 ELA standards are highlighted there in blue. It's one of our areas of focus for the year, but we have a lot that's coming our way, and we appreciate the support that you have given to teaching and learning. Are there any questions that you have?
I just have one, and that concerns how you're going to track the improvement on the literacy that we have now. How does, in other words, what's the state doing to ensure that this program is working?
For our curriculum, we have into reading as our curriculum that we're going to use, and then there are assessments that are embedded in there. We also have math so that we can track progress along the way as a district. And then there are some other metrics, some reading plans, and some other resources that the state is unveiling to try to track progress on the new standards. We'll take a look internally, and hopefully we'll be able to have some favorable results that will actually enhance the report that the state will develop on the implementation of the standards.
Dr. Moten.
Yes.
How far down the road do you think we're going to go before this stuff is, how effective it is?
What we typically do is look at a three-year trend to give us data. So about three years down the road, I think we'll have some good data because that will be time to look back at the professional learning, implementation in the classroom, and the assessments that have been implemented during that first three-year period.
I think we all know how difficult teaching is.
Absolutely.
And I'm hoping this is going to help our teachers feel better equipped when they go in the classroom for the challenges that they face with what's happened in the last few years to us. I'm glad to see us moving forward.
And what we'll all need to do collectively is give our teachers patience, some grace support, and time to implement. As we said on that last slide, they have a lot coming their way, and so they need all of our support, our grace, and our understanding as they try to meet all of the demands that are coming their way.
Thank you for this tonight.
I do have one other question.
Sure.
In looking through this, as I was reviewing this information, it all sounds great, but it's a lot of generalities at this point until we actually get down to the nitty-gritty and start working on this. And I have a concern about children who don't speak English as their native language. Is there, have you seen anything in this that takes that into consideration in how they're developing this program?
Our instructional team took a deep look at the resources that we were selecting, and that was part of the criteria that we used. Did it meet the needs of all subgroups, all students? So the curriculum that we're going to be implementing does address the needs of English learners.
Alrighty, thank you so much. We appreciate all that you ladies are doing for teaching and learning in our teachers and our system.
Absolutely.
Alrighty, next we have planning and personnel with Ms. Beckes.
Nothing at this time.
Not at this time. And last but not least, we've got Dr. Thompson with the Strategic Information Services.
Good evening. Wanted to bring two items to you this evening. One is, there's a couple of items that we typically have for you each month during the school year. We'll always have an enrollment report for you. We also, every month, provide a communications report for you, and typically those are things that are just there for your perusal, but it's helpful sometimes to take a little time to unpack what's in there. I hope you're looking at those things, but we wanted to just take a minute to go through the communications report in a little more detail than we typically do for a variety of reasons. Wanted to highlight the way the district tries to engage and communicate with the broader community and all of our parents, family, stakeholders, but also to highlight the work Ms. Valles and the Communication Department do every day, which is really exemplary. In your report, you have a lot of different things. I'm going to briefly go through some of these. You have, under "communicate," you have some examples of some areas where we've just done tacit communication, so letting people know that we've hired new principals, end-of-year reminders, Dr. Laduff's announcement as our new superintendent. The page you're on currently is our total communication. You see in-going and outgoing. So you can see that during the month of May, we sent 56,650 total remind messages to parents and guardians across the district. Contact Us is our method for the parents, stakeholders, community members to contact us directly at the district on concerns they may have about a variety of things. We got 27 such communications in the month of May. You can see how those break out by certain areas or departments as well as schools. You go to the next page, we also try to engage our families and stakeholders. So it's not just about communication, it's also about pulling them into the conversation with us. This was a post that we do regularly, which is always a fun one, which is we ask parents to share photos from the very first day of school for their kids, and then to share the after of the very last day of school so we can see the growth they have made physically over the year. That's always a fun one. We get a lot of engagement out of that particular one. The next page, what you're going to see is our total social media stats. You can see how many followers we have across the major platforms. You will notice we did lose a single X/Twitter follower, and we have launched a full-scale investigation into what caused that. Once we have determined it, we will rectify it, but we were up on every other area. Joking aside, that is usually a case where somebody deleted their account, and that's why it goes down. We highlight some of the more popular posts that get shared across various platforms. Obviously, May is graduation. Graduations are one of our biggest times for engagement, not just for the live stream but also for what we share out. You can see, for example, Wynderboro High School's graduation had a total reach of 10,200, meaning 10,200 people read those posts. You can also see 282 engaged with it. That means they commented on it, liked it, or shared it. So we're getting a lot of engagement on that. You can see BASSA had a little less than that, but they're a smaller school, so that's to be expected. 7,100 reached, 219 engagement. And you can see Appalachia had 7,600 and 295 engagement, and you can see examples of the posts that were sent out. Some of the most popular ones were the standout seniors. If you have not watched these, they're outstanding. Michael and his team did a great job with this. Jackson, all of those, Sierra, all did a great job with this, highlighting seniors, telling their story, talking about, you know, what they want to do, highlighting who they are, and it puts the focus on them, not the district, because ultimately, that's what we want to do is celebrate them. And so that was some of our most popular posts, and we're really pleased with those. After that, what you can see is you can see Dr. Laduff's, the update with the superintendent update. Very excited about that, obviously. On our YouTube videos, those are, I believe, clickable links. Am I correct on that, Nicole? So if you're on the PDF, if you click on the YouTube ones specifically, you can actually watch those videos. You have examples of three of those. We have the Teacher of the Year, we have a Standout Senior, and then some really handsome devils in the bottom right. Don't recommend clicking on that one unless you've got 10 minutes to kill. It was actually pretty fun. But those are videos that we're sharing out. You can actually see a breakdown of the videos that we share via YouTube. One of the most popular ones, you can see our Teacher of the Year announcement was the most engaged with, followed by Special Olympics. You can see our board meeting was actually very high that month. That was when we were celebrating a lot of folks at the end of the year, so a lot of good reasons for that. So you can see the breakdown of what our top 10 most shared videos were. And the very last thing is our web stats. That's basically how many total page views we're getting across all of our web platforms, and then you can see what are the most visited. Obviously, number one, the district homepage is the most visited, but you'll notice number two, careers main page, and number three, end-of-year reminder. So this is just something we provide for you each month to kind of give you an idea of how the district engages with families, with the community. Nicole's team does a fantastic job with this, and she does a great job compiling it for you. So I just thought it would be useful, once in a while, we're not going to do this every month, obviously, if we have certain things that break some records for views or engagement or we're really proud of, we will highlight those things, but we wanted to take a minute once or twice a year just to go through that with you so that you're aware of what that is. So I'd be happy to field any questions you have about the communication report.
Good job.
We appreciate that.
All right, moving on. So next is our strategic plan update. As a reminder, we do this twice a year where we try to update the board on the status of our strategic plan and how it's being implemented. As a reminder, I know some folks are newer to the board. The strategic plan was written in the spring of 2021. It was a collaborative effort by board of education members, community members, parents, teachers, business owners, students in some cases, principals, leaders. It was a huge group. It was back in COVID, and for those of you who remember, we were in Russell's old gym, and we were all seated six feet apart with about 100 people in the room. It was quite a sight. But we spent time trying to cultivate a vision of what we wanted Barrow County schools to be within five years, and we put specific goal areas and initiatives in place. So what we want to do twice a year is to update the board on the status of the implementation of each of those initiatives. We are, as a reminder, in year three, we're just finishing up year three of a five-year plan, meaning we're a little bit past the halfway mark. We still have two years to go, and as I always try to remind when we talk through this, this is a marathon, not a sprint. Some of these initiatives are easier to accomplish than others. Some are just continuations of things we already had in place. Some are heavy lifts, and they may take multiple years, or they may take a lot of research to get in place before we can implement those fully. So as an acclimater, if you'll go, Rochelle's on a page, you'll see what you have is each initiative has a code, and that fits one of five areas. If this is an area where we're still researching, we haven't started implementing, we're trying to understand what we want to do, we're in the researching phase. If we have implemented certain components of that initiative but we're not complete with that implementation, that's going to be listed as implementing. If it's completed in this school year, meaning we finally rolled out all the components this year, that's marked as completed, and then that's marked only completed for that single year it's fully implemented. For subsequent years, it's listed as ongoing. So what that means, if you have an initiative that is ongoing, that means it's been fully implemented, and now we're maintaining it, refining it, tweaking it as we go to make sure it's still being effective. We also have- we go to make sure it's still being effective. We also have, because sometimes you will have goals that for one reason or another, we want to abandon, and those are called canceled. I'm going to highlight one that we're doing that with and explain why in just a second. Rochelle, if you'll go to page 10, the very end of the document, we then take, based on these overall goal areas, we take what are the percentage of total initiatives that are fully implemented in this school year or are being maintained ongoing. And you can see, for most areas, we are either fully implemented or getting very close. As a reminder, we are still finishing year three, and some of these are pretty big asks, pretty big tasks, and we want to get them right, because ultimately, it is a five-year plan, and it'll have legs that will go way beyond those five years, particularly if we get those pieces right. So that gives you the overall where we're at in each of those goal areas. I do want to highlight a couple of things that have changed since the last update in January, and then I will open it up for questions. So Rochelle, if you'll go to page two. So Mr. Perno gave an update on this a couple of months ago. As the board is aware, because we've talked to y'all about this, we have a tremendous amount of student enrollment growth that is coming. We're estimating adding around 4,000 students over the next five years, which is a significant number, which creates a lot of pressure on the district to be able to house those students safely and effectively. As it sometimes turns out, things are fortuitous in that things that we had planned for other reasons help us in this arena, and I want to highlight two of those tonight. The first one is on page two. Barrow County used to have an early learning center where we could put all of our pre-K students under one roof, focus on their needs, have specialized staff. It was something we all cared about and loved, and unfortunately, when the recession hit, it went away due to financial reasons. But we had always had the goal to bring that back. And so that was put in the plan before anything else had been put in place. Fortuitously, as Mr. Perno described, we had a pod at BASSA that was being used for overflow there. When BASSA II opened up, that enabled the pod to be opened up. Additionally, that enabled us to move the Horizon program to that pod. We've spent a lot of time and money and effort to get that ready for them, to make that as successful as we can. That frees up then the old ELC, the old Bethlehem Elementary, as a potential ELC model with also a pod at the county line to go to a cluster model. That solves two problems for us simultaneously. It recreates the ELC that we wanted to do because that's the right thing for those students, but it also frees up two classrooms at every elementary school, which helps us with the growth that's going to come. So that was a case of being able to solve multiple problems simultaneously. The ELC is probably coming at earliest school year '26. It could even be '27. We have to make sure that's right and ready. We're not going to rush that out because that's obviously a heavy ask. The second one I want to highlight, which is related, is on page four, and that gets to, we had already, before this was even an option, discussed relocating the alternative schools specifically, because by moving it to the Innovation Campus, that opened up opportunities for collaboration with Linear Tech, but also, it's not actually in here, but also Sims Academy, other opportunities for those students to potentially get enrichment in ways with opportunities that might help them see the light at the end of the tunnel, because we know a lot of students get into a hopeless situation. They don't see a way through. They act out, they make poor decisions, and they end up there. So that's going to be a longer look. We're not quite ready to start doing that yet, because we want to make sure everything is safe and ready in its current environment. But that is the case long-term. The community saw a need for that, and this is one of those fortuitous things that we can do two things simultaneously, which benefits everyone. The last thing I want to point out, before I open it up for questions on this page, is I mentioned sometimes we have to abandon initiatives. And that's not because they were a bad idea. It's simply because a lot of times, ideas have to be fully researched and understood before we can know if this is going to fit in particular. So you'll notice, there is a research, successful, restorative practice programs and implementation guides. For those of you who are not familiar with restorative practices are, they are an alternative mode of discipline, a little different than the punitive measure. So for certain types of disciplinary infractions, typically nonviolent ones, instead of out-of-school suspensions, in-school suspensions, schools and districts look at, you know, ways for the student to sort of, you know, work off their debt, to find other ways to restore collaborative situations with other students. And this was something at the time that was very popular. So we had a group of folks looking at this, looking at other districts, other school systems that were implementing these. Were they effective? Did they fit what we wanted to do in Barrow County? And so we finally sort of wrapped that up this year, and so that's why that has been marked as completed. But what we found was, we were not particularly impressed with the track record of what we saw in most of these counties. That's not to say there were not some successes, but generally speaking, these types of programs were just not as effective as we wanted them to be. And particularly, when we know student conduct is a major concern our families and teachers have, it's not something that we were going to do unless we were fully confident that this would have a chance at success. So for that reason, we actually abandoned the related goal to that, which was about increasing the opportunities for student participation in restorative practices. And that is not to say that we might not incorporate some loose elements of it, and it's certainly not to say that we don't recognize there is still a need for more action in this area. So one of the things we would probably look at is replacing this initiative with something else, because we understand the need is still there for different ways to approach student conduct, to help free up teachers, to help make sure parents are confident in the safety of their students. But in this particular case, that was an avenue that we researched, and we just were not comfortable that that was something we wanted to go forward with. So documents like this are always living documents. They're always things that we grow with, we learn from, and we always try to make sure that we are doing in the right pacing and time, because we want it to be right for our kids. So there's your update for July of 2024. We will have more updates on this when we get closer to winter, and obviously, I'm happy to field any questions you may have. Yes?
Family engagement, I guess it's been kind of at 25% for a while. Is there anything we can do to help, you know, grow that area of strategic plan?
It's certainly an area that I know a lot of work has been done. The fact that it's not currently completed does not mean there is not a significant amount of work. I know that department has invested a lot of time. That is, I think, one of those areas where it just takes a while to get it right. You have to spend some time, because we could, honestly, we could throw something willy-nilly out and just put a check by it and move on with our lives, but we don't think that's the right thing to do in this particular case, because we understand with family engagement how critical that is to everything we do. So that's an area where we can give the board an update at some point. If you would like to hear more about the efforts that have been taken in that area, we're happy to highlight actually any area of the plan that you want to learn more about at a subsequent meeting. If you'll just indicate to Dr. Laduff you'd like more updates on that. But in this particular case, yeah, that's an area that's really important, and I think we have spent some time trying to get it right. And there has been progress made. It's just not quite where the vision was. And so we want to make sure we get that piece correct.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for putting it in such a clean, clear presentation for us and the public to see. I mean, this is our roadmap. It doesn't matter which department we meet with, every time we ask a question, you guys take us back to, is it on the plan? That way, we don't detour, you know, and go down a road we shouldn't be going down. So I appreciate that.
My pleasure.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, this time, we're going to jump down to old business. We have two items to vote on. The first one, I'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of the fiscal year 2025 general fund budget. Mr. Bailey, Ms. Hendricks, all in favor? Motion passes. And then I'd also like to ask for a motion for the approval of the fiscal year 2025 other funds budget as presented. Mr. Bailey, Ms. Malup, all in favor? All righty, thank you, guys. Motion passes. Okay, now for new business, we're going to start off with Mr. St. Clair and talk about Aruba ClearPass granted, grant-funded RFP.
Thank you. As part of our continuous effort to streamline our management of devices on the network and to protect the network from rogue devices attacking the network, a management tool called Aruba ClearPass has been on our wish list for the past couple of years. This year, a federally funded, state-managed grant for which security software was an eligible expense became available. IT has applied and was awarded the maximum amount of $100,000 towards the purchase of ClearPass, leaving the remainder to be funded by the district. We posted an RFP and received nine responses from eight vendors. The low-bid respondent, Lockstep Technology Group, met the terms of the RFP. They have a good reputation for installation support of this product, and they are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. The financial impact will be $100,000 from the federal slash state Safe School Grant Round Number Three. The remainder, $23,167.76, will come from ESAR funds. And so the superintendent recommends approving the purchase of Aruba ClearPass from low-bid respondent, Lockstep Technology Group of Atlanta, Georgia, in the amount of $123,167.76. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
So the, it's almost, well, the $100,000 of it is coming from a grant, right?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, we were very happy to see that, and that the thing we want to fit into the category.
Use it while you got it.
Yes, sir.
All righty, consent agenda? All righty.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All righty, next, we've got Dr. Thompson with the affirmation of the policy BCBI and BCBI R1, Public Participation in Board Meetings.
Good evening. Been a minute. So each year, we bring this forward to you by state law. Under state law, OCGA 2258, each Board of Education in the state is required to have a code of conduct for board meetings, for the public, to have open meeting participation rules, and also to have rules about removal of individuals for disruption of public meetings. This was revised in 2022 to add a few more requirements for what had to be in there, but it also requires that every year prior to August 1st, the local board has to reaffirm these rules via a vote. This is not a change to the particular policy. This is just by law. You have to vote for this every subsequent year. We have not changed anything from prior years. This is still the exact same procedure and policy that we had since 2022. The policy is BCBI. It just basically outlines our duties under this, that we have to notify the public of rules of code of conduct. We have to give them certain notice about public participation in meetings. But we have a laundry list of things that we have to have included. Those are all covered under Regulation BCB1R1. And this is where we get to the meat of the various rules, how this all plays out, and those have to be publicly posted, which they are on our eBoard policy site. And so by August 1st, this does not have to sit on the table for 30 days, so you can simply take action on it at the next board meeting, but you do have to publicly vote each year to reaffirm these rules. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Consent agenda? Thank you, sir. All righty, next, we have Dr. Moten to discuss the iXL program.
iXL is an online educational platform that provides personalized learning experiences for students in math and English language arts across various grade levels. There has been research, multiple studies conducted, over 75 scientific studies, I believe, conducted to evaluate the impact of iXL on academic growth and achievement. iXL provides personalized skill plans aligned with state standards and helps teachers easily find the most relevant skills for their students to work on. iXL uses a unique smart score system that monitors student progress through multiple stages of increasing difficulty. This allows students to solidify their knowledge and reach authentic skill mastery. Students have access to step-by-step examples, video tutorials, and immediate feedback with detailed explanations when they answer incorrectly. iXL also suggests foundational skills if additional support is needed. You can see supporting documents attached there. There are seven, eight that are there. The financial impact, as is listed there, is payment morris, $16,245. Yargo Elementary School, $11,100. Westside Middle School for Mathematics, $11,137.50. AIM, $5,130. Westside for Reading under L4GA Funds, $31,304.50. Wynderboro High School, also from L4GA Funds, $53,100. And then local funds would be $2,137 for BASSA. The total impact for this expenditure is $130,154. So this is the recommendation of the superintendent based on the consolidated funds, the L4GA funds, and the use of local funds.
Any questions?
Pardon me for not knowing this, but is this something we think we'll implement in all our schools before it's over?
If we have the return on the investment and we see that it is a viable practice across students, then we do plan to expand it.
So will we sort of call this a pilot program for right now?
It's not a pilot. These schools have had history with it, and they find it effective. And then we believe that we will bring other schools on board. But this is not a pilot. These schools have used it and are comfortable with it. And so we would like to add more so that we can have that greater impact on all of our schools as well. But this is our starting point.
And so for, especially on the reading side, though, is this supposed to work in tandem with the new program that is like state-mandated?
Yes, it is skill development. And on the slide where we talked about 24, 25 priorities under the multi-tiered system of supports, this would give students that additional level of academic support that they need, so that they can be successful with the standards that are being implemented.
And this is a supplementary program?
It is. It is an additional resource to give students additional help in skills practice.
So I like that it's only certain schools, because a lot of times when we do a district-wide push, some schools might not use it. So this, this shows that these schools want it.
Yes.
And I have a question too, just to follow up. This is just for what we're purchasing right now, but other, like, other purchases currently exist? Like, so like Appalachia's not on there for this. Does it mean they don't have either of the programs, or they already have it and have already purchased it, and it's not up for renewal?
These are the schools that have it currently, and then we'll set aside funds if Appalachia chooses to come on board to use it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, consent agenda? Thank you so much.
The next item is the Northwest Evaluation Association Measures of Academic Progress, also known as NWEA MAP. The Northwest Evaluation Association Measures of Academic Progress, this program is an assessment used for measuring achievement and growth in K-12 math, also reading and language usage. It is administered three times per school year. MAP Growth is an interim assessment that provides a measure of students' academic growth along the learning continuum of skills during the school year and between school years. MAP data allows schools to differentiate and adjust instruction for individual students, groups of students, or entire classes based on the results of the assessment. Teachers and administrators can access a variety of group reports measuring student growth and proficiency. The approval would be for this coming school year as well as future years. You can see the financial impact that's listed there would be 11,000 students at $14.50 per student, for a total of $154,000 from the general fund. Therefore, the superintendent recommends authorizing the renewal of the NWEA MAP Growth K-12 Assessment License for the 24, 25 school year.
Any questions? Consent? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All righty, at this time, we're going to go into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment compensation, hiring, disciplinary action or dismissal, or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee, or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent. All righty, guys, we'll go in the back room, and we'll be back in just a few minutes.
I like playing with toys.
I like my teacher.
I'm over the new friend pre-K. Pre-K is out this world.
Sims Academy is a career-prep school available to all high school students in Barrow County. Daily, Sims is filled with students taking dual enrollment courses, industry-specific CTAE classes, and Sims offered high school classes like construction. Pending the student's schedule, they may spend all day at Sims or utilize the BCSS organized shuttles to or from their home schools.
Sims is also home to many of Barrow County School System's unique programs, such as the Newcomer Academy, YES Program, and Step Program.
Sims was the first school on the Innovation Campus before being joined by Linear Technical College, Barrow Arts and Science Academy, and Austin Road Elementary School. It began with a mission- It began with a mission that continues to evolve to ensure the success of BCSS students and our local community.
The YES Program at Sims is a class for students with disabilities that are in their senior year of high school. The YES Program is partnered with the Goodwill Northeast Georgia, Georgia Vocational Rehabilitation Agency, and High School High Tech with the goal of helping seniors be better prepared for the independent employment after high school.
Goodwill staff works with participants of the Youth Job Training Program to set career goals and equip students with the necessary skills to enter the workforce. YES participants can earn high school credit for job readiness training classes and paid work experience. The YES Program has three phases. Phase one, one transition class at Sims Academy during the fall semester of senior year. Phase two, a paid internship in the spring of senior year if the student has proven to be motivated and reliable. Phase three, full-time job placement after graduation.
The Student Transition Enrichment Program, also known as STEP, is a full-time, year-long, school-to-work transition program for students with significant cognitive disabilities who have the goal of supported employment after high school. The STEP Program provides supportive work experiences in a variety of community business settings as well as within common ground, the cafeteria, and various CTAE classrooms. It also gives students the opportunity to practice self-determination, self-advocacy, and independent living skills. This program has an application process, and students must be accepted for the IEP team to consider this service.
Sims Academy students can build a strong foundation for their culinary careers through our dual enrollment partnership with Linear Technical College. Highly qualified instructors from Linear Technical College teach students in the Career and Technical Education Programs available to students through Sims Academy.
The Culinary Arts Program prepares students for employment within many facets of the food service industry. Students will obtain technical skills training focusing on food preparation, sanitation, nutrition, marketing, catering, management fundamentals, and work ethics.
The Prep Cook Technical Certificate of Credit provides skills for entry into the food services preparation area as a prep cook. Topics include food services history, safety and sanitation, purchasing and food control, nutrition and menu development and design, along with the principles of cooking. Students who complete this certificate are positioned to earn several additional certificates that lead to a diploma or degree in culinary arts.
Sims offers students a hands-on opportunity to learn construction, carpentry, and electrical fundamentals. The construction pathway consists of four courses ranging from fundamentals and safety to carpentry and electrical skills. These courses are designed to help prepare students for careers in the construction industry, and many graduates find work in the construction industry after completing this pathway. The motto that students have in the class is that anything worth doing is worth doing right the first time.
The Barrow County Newcomer Academy was established in 2017 with the purposes of supporting high school students as they transition to life in the United States. Since its inception, the Newcomer Academy has served speakers of many different languages from all around the world. Instructors work with students to develop their English and product support in their academic classes. Additionally, the Newcomer Academy serves to support students with many unique challenges of adapting to life in new culture surrounded by a new language.
Sims Academy in Barrow County offers high school students a dynamic career prep experience with dual enrollment, CTAE classes, and unique courses. Sims is a direct path to a brighter future.
I've seen extremely competitive senior classes, but I've never been able to introduce three star students. Let's get started, I've got a lot to say. Appalachia's first star student is Ashton Graham. I'll let you hold this when I talk about you, he's gonna take you in. Ashton is a four-year varsity soccer player and team captain. He is president of HOSA, he is vice president of the Science National Honor Society, he's also a member of NHS, Math Honor Society, Beta, and the Student-Athlete Ambassadors. He's also participated in the past in Youth Leadership Barrow and the Chick-fil-A Leadership Academy. Since third grade, he's volunteered at Special Olympics, and I'm sure he will again this year. He coaches at the Piedmont Soccer Academy, and he's just a really super kind young man. He plans to major in biology and become a doctor, and he's deciding where he'll start that journey soon, I think scholarships are in his future. It's also really important to note that after all of that, doing all that he does, Ashton is also the 2024 valedator of his class. Congratulations, and it's been quite an honor to get to know you. I'm going to let you introduce your star teacher.
My star teacher that I chose, I had all the way back in third grade. He was the first guy to actually challenge me in my intellect and gave me opportunity to do work for fourth, fifth grade middle school, all the way back in third grade. And, but it's not only that why I chose him, the main reason I chose him was the effect he had on me and then all the other people around him outside of like a school, just academic setting. He, I had this one friend, I'm not gonna say his name, but he, he was extremely smart as well, it's just he had some other things that held him back, and Mr. McCoy was the first person I saw that gave him the opportunity to showcase his knowledge in another way, and he was one of the smartest kids at the school. So for that reason, I chose Mr. Carl McCoy as my star teacher.
Thank you, wow. I don't know what to say, but I'll say, thank you to the Chamber of Commerce, it does mean a lot to be recognized, and thank you Ashton, that was very kind of me to say. I thought I'd tell a story about Ashton from the first day of school in third grade back when, that kind of says it all about him, everything that his principal said comes out in the story. Forgive me if I get the dates wrong, it's been a decade. During our morning announcements, we would recognize, you know, okay, you guys, you're graduating in what year and date, and we're all saying 2024. So I cracked the joke, oh, you're making me feel old. Then I put a problem on the board and said, well, I graduated in 1988, and how many years would pass in between your graduation date and my graduation date? And the kids all puzzled, and this guy here, you have to picture an elementary school classroom 15 minutes into the first day of school, it's all about chill out, take your supplies out, you know, it's a big mess. And this guy, he's, he's gotta solve the problem, so he tears into his pencil pack, pencils fall all over the floor. He runs the sharpener, he sharpens it, he solves the problem, he's raising his hand, and it looks like if I don't call on him, he's gonna burst. So I called him, and he came up with the right answer, of course. He said, 36 years. And one of the other students said, so does that mean you're 36? Or does that mean then you'll be 36 when we graduate? Thank you for that. And I said, well, maybe we can figure that out. And so this guy, he starts figuring it out, and I said, well, some of the other kids have obviously figured it out too. And I said, well, Ashton, pick a couple of kids, be in a group with you, see if you can figure out how old I really am. So he picked two of his friends, and then I went on to show the other kids how to do the first problem. And when we were done, I called on Ashton, I said, Ashton, how old am I? And he said, can I let him say it? And it didn't dawn on me then, but the kid that he picked was one of his friends, and this kid struggled a bit, as I've learned every month's gone by. And he let this kid say it, and he let this kid explain it. Furthermore, while that kid explained it, he went and picked up his pencil off the floor. So it was an honor to teach you, and you left me with lots of stories like that, but that's the one that really stands out, and good luck, and you're gonna make a fine gastroenterologist.
Being a star teacher at Appalachia years ago was the greatest honor of my career, and so it was really exciting for me to see an elementary school teacher chosen, and Ashton was really clear about, he started me off right and changed my education, so I'm really excited for the two of them. Our second star student is Nathaniel Maxson. I'm glad he's here and on time. When we were honoring a lot of academic honors, our top 10, our star students, our Val, our Sal, we waited on him, he made a grand entrance, and that's who he is, and we love seeing him in our hallways and doing all that he does, he's an asset to Appalachia. Nathaniel was a member of the golf team for one year, he has played football for four years as a linebacker, all the things. He plans to receive a bachelor's in business administration from the University of North Georgia, and I think he'll do fine with that as he currently has a 3.83 GPA. Nathaniel, please introduce your star teacher. And he's struggling with his voice, so we're gonna...
I'm gonna whisper for y'all today. So I picked this Nathaniel Maxson because she just changed my outlook on schoolroom gym. I've always been somebody who like, really likes numbers, and they always click to me. Whenever I walked in her classroom, from day one, she's been loving the gym. She pushes me every day, and that's the reason I ended up taking college classes again. I ended up taking Bush number one, number two because of her, and I just appreciate that as a person. Thank you.
I'm gonna summarize, he said he always loved numbers until he was in Ms. Atkinson's literature class. She taught him to love literature, and then he went on to take English 1101, and is the man he is today because of you.
Good morning. It's unusual that he can't speak. Finally caught up with it. Max, it's his nickname, is, was in the 10th grade. He was a great writer, he'd been asked for feedback, a lot of kids get really angry when you give them constructive feedback. He'd rewrite, he was great at writing, and we had many Socratic seminars and debates, and he would handle himself well, always. A couple times I want to have to say, hold on for just a second, but I will say that you were always, and you still are, the voice for the underdog. I started my day out with you, and we won't use names as you said earlier, but we had a young man in our class that was so super intelligent, but behavior would get in the way, and he would always push them. And if he could, sometimes I think he thought I was about to tackle the kids, he would like, he would have sense, but he was always the voice for the underdog, and would point it out, and when we would do that, you remember, this young man was one of the smartest kids. He would speak up and we would get, well, and you were the only person who could do that. We were speaking at the table about baby teaching, I don't know about that, but I think he would do that. And I also wanted to say, great support system all around from the parents. I only have signs, and you've done such a great job. He's kind, handsome, and... I'm sorry, did that sound inappropriate? I'm only in his area. You've done a great job, and this is the beginning of some really great memories, just hold it back a little bit. It continues asking those questions. He would ask the right questions, and I actually want to end on this, where do you stand with Julius Caesar? With Brutus? Did Brutus do this? Did he have daddy issues, or did he do it? Or Rome?
I don't remember.
Congratulations.
Alright, everyone need coffee? Y'all got time for one more? Appalachia's third star student is Colton Waylon. So Colton has played soccer for four years and club soccer for two, and the last two soccer games where I was freezing in so many layers, I don't think he was, and he never stopped talking to his teammates, encouraging them, telling them where to be and how to get better, but it was so positive and encouraging the whole game. So every time I was walking a lap and getting back to where he was standing, I couldn't wait to hear his encouragement of his team. He also played football his senior year, he is vice president of TSA, Colton participated in Youth Leadership Barrow, and he volunteered as a coach for two years and worked as a YMCA camp counselor for two summers. He's received the Georgia Certificate of Merit in 2023, a Scholar-Athlete Award in 2023, and Student of the Month in September of 2022. Colton is in the top 10 of the senior class, and he plans to major in accounting at UGA. Go Dawgs! Colton, congratulations, and please tell us also why you chose your star teacher.
Before I got in Ms. Atkinson's class, I had never liked, at all, at all, I hated. But once I had her as a teacher, she pushed me to develop new ideas and really be able to put my words onto paper and say what I wanted to say. She really inspired me to become a better student, and with her help, I was able to now write a lot better, put everything out on paper that I want to say in ways that would not be possible without her as a teacher. Thank you.
Hello again. Huge honor, and these two have the same YouTube name, so this is Sunshine, by the way. Sunshine, because remember the Titans, right? Sunshine, so that's his nickname. Where this guy was the voice for the underdog, this young man is one of the few students in 27 years of teaching that actually listens more than he talks. And in class, when we would have debates, he would listen, and when you would raise your hand, and he would participate, but when he would raise his hand, the kids would give you more attention than they ever gave me. Number one, because you listened, but number two, because I know that your parents instilled in you kindness, and you respected others, and you listened to them, and again, you listened more than you spoke, and I always said, and the smile, you can't look at the smile with the smile, too. Again, great writer, but I was saying to you earlier, and again, it's been a while, but I can always remember to you, I remember you having like philosophy quotes, and you would speak up, and I'm like, how old are you, 50, 55? But he was, he would truly, he would say things, especially Julius Caesar, that's my favorite, and he would make a comment and say that this philosopher said this, but truly, when I would look out at the, at your peers, they truly were focused on you, and that's a great power that I hope you continue to use when people listen, because I think we're in a time where we listen sometimes to the wrong people, and you had it right every single time. And your parents, great support system, kind, people, people love you, and he's always smiling, I've never seen you once not smile. And I tell my students, it doesn't mean that you're not having a bad day, but you were able to come in there and turn him around if it was a bad day and be positive for everybody else. Again, you're going to have a great college career, and I hope you continue to inspire people, because both of you, I cannot tell you, this is a colossal honor of any that I've gotten in this environment, I'm super proud of you. And thank you, hang on a minute, like, these are the people that you need to talk to, but don't forget your counselors. Ms. Rayburn's here this year, but she's been, she's awesome, we love her, by the way, at Appalachia. Anyway, I'll be quiet if I know. I love you, young men, and I also thought Ashton, you couldn't, there's not three better people that could be standing up here, and Appalachia should be very proud, and I'll be quiet. Congratulations.
She's absolutely right, there aren't three better representatives of Appalachia than these three young men, and I want to just state really quickly that the three of them chose their teachers separate from each other, they were not in the same room when they They were not in the same room when they chose, and they all three knew immediately who they wanted to pick. They knew immediately who had had the biggest impact on their educational careers thus far. And they chose Ms. Atkins separately, which I think, Ms. Atkins separately, which I think is a really big honor for her, and an elementary school teacher is the highlight of all of this. Thank you, three gentlemen, for being my first great three-star students.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Eggersstedt. I am a pre-K teacher at Auburn Elementary in Barrow County. So, the pre-K program in Barrow County helps to prepare students for kindergarten by getting them able to socialize with others before they get ready to learn about how to read and how to function in the school system. So, after our morning meeting, we will go into center time where kids will get to choose where they want to play, like in the math center, in reading center, reading books, and in block center, building things, and in home living, where it is just like a little house. And kids will get to just interact with other students, and the teachers in the classroom are basically monitoring them and helping them through their daily lives. So, Barrow County pre-K is different from other counties because we actually do school inside of a school. We are actually able to interact with other classes, other kindergarteners, and they can see how other students, older students, are going to school. And they feel important because they're actually in the same building with other students that are not their age. I think that parents should enroll their kids in the Barrow County school system for pre-K because it gives the students a sense of belonging to the school that they're going to be at, and also because we love, we love the kids, and we love to be able to interact with them and get them used to going to school. So, it makes a big difference in how they are able to go on to kindergarten. If you're thinking about enrolling, visit our website today.
Hey, everybody. Have you ever seen this book?
Pete the Cat.
It's a Pete the Cat book, right? Here, I'm going to sit down here with you. So this is about going to the library. Who's ever been to the library?
Me.
Pete's mom is taking him to the library for the first time. The librarian gives Pete his very own library card. "Cool," says Pete. The librarian smiles. "Time for the tour." And this is Pete's mom. Has anybody ever seen Pete's mom before? Not me? Pete's mom was in the second Pete the Cat book about going to school. It's called Rockin' in My School Shoes, and that was the first time you saw Pete's mom. The librarian takes Pete through the library. There is a big desk where people wait to check out books. Pete sees some of his friends reading at a long table. It's very peaceful and quiet. How relaxing. Who is this cat right here? This, this one, does anybody know who that is? Who is that? Thank you. Pete has a brother, right? And this is Pete's brother Bob, and Bob has green eyes, and he's black and white. I have a black and white cat like this now, but it's a girl, and her name is Abby. And Abby was not happy when I left this morning. The librarian takes Pete to her favorite room. There are lots of Pete-sized chairs and tables and shelves. There are books of every shape, size, and color. So who, who knows who this is? Does anybody know who that is?
A frog.
Right, what's his name?
Grumpy.
Who said grumpy? Yay, yes, it's Grumpy. And this is Owl. And who is this?
Squirrel.
Squirrel, right. And does anybody know who this squirrel is? Callie?
Callie.
You know Callie?
Yeah.
Yeah, Pete's friend, Callie. And this is a platypus named Gus. Can you remember that? That's Gus. "What do I do now?" Pete asks. "Now you read a book," the librarian says. "Which book should I read?" asks Pete. "You can read any book you like," says the librarian. Pete looks around, there are so many books. Pete picks up a book all about airplanes and jets. Who likes airplanes and jets? Your brother does? He reads it and pretends he is a stunt pilot. He flies a super-fast jet and does loop-de-loops and spirals high in the sky. Pete finds a book with dragons, wizards, and unicorns on the cover. He reads it and imagines that he is a powerful wizard using magic spells and a special wand to defend his castle against a fire-breathing dragon. So, what is a unicorn? What is it?
A horse.
A horse with what?
A horn.
A horn? Thank you. Very good. Next, Pete opens a book about spiders and insects. Ooh, spiders! He reads it and imagines that he is a scientist studying all types of critters in the wild. He has to be very still to study some of the critters. Who has seen a spider? Anybody? It's Ha... You've seen lots? Around Halloween? You saw two spiders in your house? And what about butterflies? Who knows butterflies? Then Pete chooses a book with all sorts of scary monsters on the cover.
All righty, welcome back, everybody. At this time, can I get a motion to approve the personnel report as presented? Mr. Bailey, Ms. Malouf, all in favor? All right. Motion passes. If you will keep note of the next meeting dates, we have on Thursday, June 27th, we'll have our last military public hearing at 1:00 p.m. And then we will take a two-week break for 4th of July and reconvene for a regular scheduled board meeting on July 9th at 6:00 p.m. If there's nothing else to discuss, we're adjourned. Y'all have a good night.